We ask Father that you would help us to do this and bring honor and glory to your name and do our part to bring your kingdom here on earth. Christ told him to approve. Amen.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lawrence. I pledge the witness.
Goodbye, all of the United States of America and to the Republic through which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may we see it. We have some people who have signed up to speak. We're pretty much at our capacity. I say distance here in courtroom. So we will rotate those folks in so they can address county commissions. So each person will have three minutes and we will begin that here shortly. There's no public hearing tonight. So at this time, the agenda, on your vote, I'll vote. Have a motion by Mr. Baal, second by Sammy Solomon. I'm a favor president agenda. Can we go ahead and vote? Agenda is approved, eighteen zero. Next item on the agenda is approval of a minute. Your family, if you're ready for a monthly voting session from June twenty ninth, and a beer board here, that's also on June twenty ninth. Motion to approve from Mr. Solomon, second amendment. Passes eighteen zero. Next item on the agenda is parents of citizens. If they're not in the ring, we'll bring them in. Do I see a foot forms, anybody that wishes to speak?
Is there anybody else?
Greg, is there anybody you filled out that I don't have?
Filled out now.
Okay, thank you. First person, Denise Fair, just pick up the microphone, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Denise. I live at fourteen eleven Sandy Drive in Newmarket. For those that don't know me, I have six children, five are currently in our school system, and I serve on the school board. I'm very concerned about the issue of building two new schools. I ask that you do not fund this request. I ask that you fund renovations instead. I come to you first to apologize. I should have come before you prior to the vote to fund the recent athletic renovations that occurred at the high school. I spoke to a commissioner or two, but I did not address all of them, and I should have. I've been greeted criticized by many of the boards for speaking up. I've even had an ink pen tossed at me in a meeting for God's sake. But you know what? I'm not the only one about the board. I'm the beat of the temple, one group, those that elect me. Now moving on. I know a few of you were able to tour J E S on Saturday to see firsthand some of the issues that are in dire need of repair. I visit this school daily, two of the teachers are currently attending. I want you to realize the problems that you've been shown did not occur overnight. There was no tornado, inland hurricane, or structural fire that caused these problems. These issues have been there many for decades. Before the board asked me to fund the two point two million dollars in athletic renovations, we were aware of these needed repairs. We should be ashamed of the state at which J E S specifically is in. That building was constructed in nineteen fifty's. Very little has been done to maintain it or many of the other buildings in our county. Before voting on the athletic renovations, I pleaded with the board to use that settlement money on repairs. I told them countless stories of bleachers falling apart, drainage issues, and infiltration of bats for two of our middle schools. I caught thirteen mice in a trash in her room in one day. Last Thursday night, I found out that a girls' basketball player at Rush Strong overheated and was vomiting during practice. Why? Because there's no air conditioning at any of the middle school gyms in this county. Heck, it took me five months to get a hot hole right here at J M S. I had to threaten to go to Lowe's and get a bag of cement to fix it myself before it was finally fixed. These things should disgust you. They should have disgusted my six counterparts, did they? Maybe. But they still voted against fixing them. Instead, they voted to use that money for wants and not needs. We've not maintained these buildings and have passed behaviors, any indication of future behavior, it's going to happen again if you choose to fund new buildings. So it boils down to this: desperate repairs are needed, debt does not. The state budget's been cut by one point five million dollars this year. We're amid a worldwide pandemic. We closed school parks and we might have to do it again. But we have people that want to waste taxpayer money and build buildings in spite of all of this. You can stop that. I tried, but I'm only one vote. The request for more money isn't going to end. This is just phase one. There's a phase two that includes building new middle schools. The board will be back asking you for more funding. I'm trying to stand up for what's best for this county as a whole. Will you stand with me and do the right thing? Renovate, lock and shut.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Could you state your name and address for us, Mr. Seale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, David Seale. Seven thirty, San Martin Road in Dandridge, speaking on the topic of school building and county debt. Last Monday, at the work session, I presented the case that education is in a state of transition, headed away from public schooling. Nothing we can do about that. Voters are choosing this. Several facts and information sources were presented for review, and I'll add to that evidence. Seventy-one percent of the public supports education savings accounts. Sixty-two percent support school vouchers. Sixty-two percent support tax credit scholarships. Sixty-one percent support public charter schools. In light of the shift toward private education, I'm asking you to consider two policies. The first is a set of recommendations to the school board. A, return the ninth grade to the main campus. Should have been there to start with. Place all student zoning options on the table, including the expansion of K through eight facilities. Cancel plans to build the new schools and establish K through eight magnet schools at Patriot Academy and Rush Strong. That's the recommendations to the school board. Item two, second. Second item, use the opportunity that we have in 2023 to accelerate repayment of the county debt. When you do that, you'll have twenty cents on the tax rate available to fund services that include education. And today's, the value today's penny, that's two point four million dollars a year. Think about that before you extend the debt. On a side note, there's an effort underway to return to elected school super tenants in the state of Tennessee. I'm firmly with that. I'm working on it. I expect bills to be introduced, and I'll give you an update pending the information and bill filings. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Seale. Courtney D. Nail.
Hello. Hi. My name is Courtney Nail. I live at nineteen fifty-four River Miss Circle in Newmarket. I grew up in Jefferson County, and I still live in Jefferson County. And my son goes to Newmarket Elementary. I've been teaching, this is my fifteenth year. My first eight years were at Rush Strong, and the last seven have been at Jefferson Elementary. I'm blessed and thankful to live in this county and also work in the school that I went to. I went to Jefferson Elementary, Jefferson Middle, and Jefferson County High School. The elementary cafeteria is named after my grandmother, Bertha Jet, who was the cafeteria manager for thirty-five years. So I'm very connected, work and home. So some of the things I have gathered are concerns about building. Some things I've heard is, you know, our numbers are lower and loss to private school vouchers. But I'm wondering, are the numbers lower? Is that the data that you're receiving from Central Office and Dr. Johnston? I know in my kindergarten classroom last year, and it's looking like this year, I have twenty-two five-year-olds in my classroom. We are not low attendance. And there's four kindergarten teachers this year, and we're all looking at having twenty-two plus. As far as vouchers go, you may have a reason to be nervous. New families don't see the heart and soul that's in Jefferson Elementary School. They only see the exterior of the building, and frankly, the interior of the building. And I can tell you firsthand, on an in-service day, I went to use the bathroom before I went to lunch and was locked in my bathroom. When I went to open the door, the handles went off on both sides. I was locked in my bathroom. No phone, no way to get out, no person in the building. They couldn't hear me yelling, beating, because there's other construction going on in another classroom. I had to kick a hole in the wooden door and crawl out. And that's just experience for me. So now, they had to put the same handles back on because the building's so old, they can't put new handles. So I have to keep them taped so it doesn't happen to the children. It's easy to judge us by our cover, but Jefferson Elementary are more than a building. We are J E S, and we are the best. I encourage you to make the best choice and build us a new school. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Ley.
Hello, I am Amanda Ley, four hundred Dogwood Lane in Talbot. My name is Amanda Ley, and I am a thirteen-year veteran teacher at Jefferson Elementary School. I, along with the multitude of staff and parents before you, want to say thank you for considering approving the plan to build us a new building for the students of our county. You see, I'm a product of Jefferson County schools. I attended Jefferson Elementary, Jefferson Middle, and Jefferson County High School. I received the Future Teacher Scholarship under the mentorship of Teresa Nolan while at J C H S, which brought to fruition my dream. It was the passionate, tireless investment of so many educators that drew me to stay and invest in the lives of the young people of Jefferson County. I sincerely believe that every student deserves an adult who fiercely believes in them. Someone who takes away the period and puts a comma. Someone who sees hidden potential, who inspires them to have productive struggles and persevere. Someone who teaches them the power of yet. I strive each day to show the love of Christ through my attitude, my care, and my love for my students and their families. You see, this is the greatest mission field in the world. This is a profession that God called me to as a kindergartner in the room of Marilyn Barr at Jefferson Elementary School. I knew then I wanted to be the investment that she was for me. Teachers have such a special job. We shape the future. Every day when I open the door to my classroom, I open the potential of eighteen world changers. And I believe the world will be a better place because of what they'll do in it. At J E S, we all believe that. You'd be hard-pressed to find a group of people that love children any better than this group right here. What we would love is for students to enter a building that more accurately reflects their character, their potential, and their value. A place that runs more seamlessly, where quality education can happen without interruption of boiler repairs, blinds that don't close because they have asbestos, you can't touch them. A gym with no A C and plumbing that stops up. A building that's safe and protects our children with adequate safety measures like complete fencing, water sprinklers, and the ability to safely lock down. A building where simple things like heat and water are no longer questionable. A building that would house all the tools that I, as an educator, need to help the children of Jefferson County reach their full potential. We at Jefferson Elementary are excited about this plan. We're anxious to watch our community rally behind our students and provide them with educational facilities that make us competitive and facilities that better prepare them for the future. Our students deserve to be a priority. Thank you again for your support and concern for the best interests of Jefferson County. We're excited about the future.
Thank you. Next is Dusty Cox, and I think he may be outside. Mr. Cox, if you've come to the podium, state your name and address for us, please.
Robert Dustin Cox, three eighty-four Camelot Drive, White Pine, Tennessee.
You've got three minutes.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you all for allowing me to come speak for a moment. I'd like to talk for just a moment about what-if thinking, all right? As we all know, now more than ever, we're in a what-if society. Unfortunately, the what-ifs, they're either filling us with fear of the future, or they're provoking negative connotations that are paralyzing us. This is across the country. I'd like to what-if for a moment, but with some optimism. What if we focus on the students that are sitting in the classroom this year and not just the ones that aren't? How would that change our decisions? I bet we'd redirect our attention back to the asbestos tiles, the exterior doors that won't lock, windows that won't close and stay closed, blinds that are falling, mold, insufficient H V A C, that goes on. Roofs that are leaking. These issues have not gone away because of where we are. What if we allow the vision and the plan that's been presented to us and developed by our school leaders and our finance director? What if we allow that plan that we, that the school board with overwhelming majority align with and support? What if we allow that opportunity to align with our students, with our kids, with giving them a safe and healthy learning environment? What if we drew a line in the sand so we're no longer going to continue to throw money at seventy-year-old buildings that can't continue to be maintained and fixed so that our kids do have a safe learning environment? You'd be setting up your predecessors so that they aren't having to make the same decisions on perhaps a much larger scale. We'll be doing exactly what we set out to do when we took public positions, and that's leaving things better than we found them. So what-ifs don't have to have a negative outcome. What-if answers can support a vision of our leaders and promote wise usage of funds. Let's not be paralyzed by what-ifs. Let's capitalize on an opportunity that we have. And I promise you, these opportunities provide us to imagine success. So let's do that. Let's think about the successes that we've been offered. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Robbie Pinkerton, fourteen eighty Royal Drive, Jefferson City. I have read David Seale's material on public school Exodus, and I completely agree with him. In fact, I have made personal projections that are even stronger than what he said. I am very sorry that school board member Denise Fair was not able to be present at the meeting when the school board members took a tour of Jefferson Elementary School so that she could have seen the atrocious conditions of the building. We stood in the gym and watched the traffic pass by on the fore lane through a large crack in the wall. I asked, why has this crack not been filled in? Told, oh, it has been many times, but the wall shifts and the crack reappears. I asked why the quarter inch of dust was not cleaned off the pipes running through every room in the building that was causing my throat as an asthmatic to close up? Told, oh, we have been told not to touch any of those because it is all asbestos and we may stir it up. I stood in amazement in the boiler room where the principal showed us how he stacks and unstacks boards and bricks under the pipes to the boiler to assure there's heat in the building as the foundation shifts regularly. I wanted to cry as we were told that teachers are not allowed to lower or raise their blinds because there's danger in one falling on a child. We stood in front of closed windows, but our hair was blowing because the windows are so bad. We witnessed windows that will not close no matter how much work maintenance has done to them. I have listened to teachers tell me of the inadequate wiring in the classrooms for twenty-first century teaching aids. The original three outlets are in each room with multiple power strips in each outlet. They have to decide what to unplug in order to plug in a needed device. I have read the reports on the drinking fountains, no doors that are wheelchair accessible. I have been told of three teachers on the same hall being diagnosed with cancer during the last five years. For those of you who do not know me, my friends and family laugh at how cheap I am. I can squeeze a dollar as tight or tighter than anybody in this room. If there was any way Jefferson Elementary School problems could be remedied with only repairs, I would be the first to be asking for it. Mr. Marcus Reed came to our school board workshop. After the day-long meeting was finished, he paid me a very high compliment, which I will always remember and appreciate. He had listened carefully to me during the day and thanked me for thinking of the county taxpayers with all my comments. The director of schools has carefully looked at programs and cut out some frivolous money that was being wasted. Thank you for listening to a very short list of problems at Jefferson Elementary School.
Thank you. Steve McSmith, and I think he's outside. Do you know the drawer, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Steve McSmith. I live at three seven six six Islandview Road, Sevierville, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Parry's Chapel Community. The original effort of the Parry's Chapel Community's Jefferson to Sevier campaign commenced three years ago. That effort ultimately failed, but the needs of the populace in that geographical area that are the basis for our request for improved services remains. The county added a second school bus route to slightly shorten the ride time for students in our area. The county led us to believe as far back as 2018 that the highway department would receive budget appropriations for three years consecutively as an initial step to improve our disgustingly dilapidated roads. And last year, the county voted to hire six new EMS techs and to purchase one new ambulance so to facilitate having twenty-four-seven ambulance service at Chestnut Hill advantageous to the residents of the isolated Parry's Chapel community. A year later, have there been any new EMS hires? Has a new ambulance been purchased? A lack of communication leaves us scratching our heads and wondering. Budget year 2018 nineteen saw asphalt paving of Buckhorn Road and part of Parry's Chapel Road, our two major roads, south and north. Budget year 2019 twenty saw no work done other than minor patching and repairs. A phone conversation with Highway Superintendent Charles Tipton this past week indicated that he is still challenged with finding the funds to continue the paving schedule for the budget year 2020 twenty-one. We were told that money was secured and would be available through three years consecutively. The county is currently planning to close the trash drop-off site nearest to us, which is one hundred percent inconvenient to our normal daily travels, and replace it with another even farther away and even more inconvenient. This issue dates to June twenty-eighth, 2018. Promises are meaningless unless there is timely, meaningful follow-up. If Jefferson County cannot or will not provide basic government services for the most isolated portion of the county and won't consider a boundary change to allow us to become part of a county that can and will, then perhaps it's time to negotiate an agreement with Sevier County and make our Parry's Chapel community a unique district with shared services from two counties. The absolute worst scenario for the Parry's Chapel community is for the county government to continue to promise change, then ignore us, and hope that we'll forget what you've promised to provide. We're not forgetting. We're not going to fade away because we're ignored. Fulfill your responsibilities as taxpayers in the Parry's Chapel community and make us believe that we can trust what you tell us is honorable. You have a choice between being a legitimate, trustworthy government body or giving yourselves a black eye by failing to be an honest, responsible legislative entity. It's an important choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anne Marie Potts. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Anne Marie Potts. I live at nineteen twenty-four Oak Grove Grove in Dandridge. Mayor Potts, County Commission. It is an honor and a pleasure to stand before you tonight in honor of the school board asking for funding of the two elementary schools. I am a twenty-year veteran school board member. We have been involved in many building programs, and I'm extremely proud of them. It's easy to ask, why is Jefferson Elementary and Piedmont Elementary in the position that they are? Well, one of the reasons is it has taken us twenty years to get rid of the portables that we had at Jefferson Elementary, Dandridge Elementary, White Pine School, and Jefferson County High School. It takes us a while to do funding for one project that we have to omit other projects. But now, we're looking at the age of our schools and the needs of them, and right now it's been identified that Jefferson Elementary and Piedmont Elementary are the two top priorities. I ask you to consider this funding because they are needs that are not going to go away. If we delay it, then we just delay the need that for much longer. And we also have the funding available for a change, which is super exciting for me on the school board side, having to ask county commission for funding. It's always a problem, and I don't mean that to be negative, but it is a concern, and it's something we would like to work together. It has been a privilege to work together with you all on many projects, and I hope that on this one, we will find the opportunity to work together to solve the problem at these two schools so that we can continue to serve our students and our faculty who have come out, and I appreciate you so very much, and that we will do continue to do good things for Jefferson County. I personally believe that public education will always be a pillar in American society. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of notarization bonds. Mr. Herndon has updated your list. Motion to approve will be in order. Thank you to all our citizens who commented tonight. We value your input. Thank you for being here. Have a motion from Mr. Solomon, second by Mr. Seales. You may go ahead and vote approval of bonds and notarization. Nineteen zero, it passes. Next item, reports from elected officials. First of all, everyone doesn't have it, but at the back of your packet, for those that you got it, I got a letter July the fifteenth from Tennessee Housing Development Agency. Just real quickly, each February, we call a special call meeting to try to get a half million dollars in housing rehab. And this year, we missed it last year by about five points. This year, it came back and said we were one point short. And I said, is there any way we can do something, get a point? So they went back and refigured, and as the letter says, there's ten points we did not get. So we are now part of a half million dollars housing rehab, and that provides you meet the income. So if you can provide us with people who have housing needs, roofing needs, window needs, and they follow within the income guidelines, there's money there. So for the first time, we've been able to get that. And that's a good news for us. So just wanted to let you know that. Next item is mayoral appointments. Bill Newman to the Jefferson Memorial Oversight Board, that's a reaparlment. Motion by Mr. Seale, second by Mr. Fagan. You may go ahead and vote on that appointment. Nineteen to zero. Second mayoral appointment is the Jefferson Park Nursing Home Board. That'd be a reaparlment of Carolyn Bowles. Faster than Frank and Ty. Motion by Mr. Castrich, and second by Mr. Scarlett. You may go ahead and vote. Passes eighteen zero, one and stain. Next item you will find, for point of information, from Kevin Poe. As you know, if an elected official wants to do something different than the employee handbook, they simply file that with clerk, and then it's not FYI, it's given to you. So that's provided in your packet. Also, you will find a resignation from Darrell Life Daniels as custable in that district. You'll find your quarterly reports. That brings us down to Director Skills. Dr. Johnston, you wanted to speak.
Just a follow-up from last week. Again, appreciate everybody's passion on the issue that's at hand. Just to recap and then specifically answer some questions really from last week, specifically, again, May seventh, school board approved a motion to build two elementary schools to replace the two schools that scored the worst on the needs assessment that they funded. That vote was six one. In the school board meeting on May seventh, it was two schools, elementary, for six hundred students each, in the same district that they currently are in. First of all, again, it's good news, everybody in the room, the people behind me, in front of me, and everybody. We all care about teachers. We all care about kids. We know that this is a money decision and a timing decision, and so we understand the gravity of that and appreciate everyone's passion either way. Some questions from last week that was mentioned, I believe... Some questions from last week that was mentioned, I believe Mr. Reed asked me specifically last week in the Budget Committee meeting if there are planned phases of this. There is not an approved plan that has been divided into phases on this. If you go back to the January 20 board retreat that was held here in the county, this was handed out as part of the five scenarios that, you know, were discussed all throughout the spring. Technically, we landed, or the board landed, again, I work at the pleasure of the board, the board landed on Scenario 3. As you know, it's at the top of one of those pages in that handout on January 20. It said Scenario 5 was the possibility of combining schools, closing four to build two. And then page two of that at the top said sample Scenario 5, and it just laid out how a timeline could work. But again, the board has made no official plan. There's been no vote on that. So this is a standalone motion here. Now, of course, as buildings continue to get, you know, deteriorate or age, just like us, I find myself going to the doctor a little more than I did at 28, at 48. So, you know, what happens next will be the pleasure of the board. It has been mentioned also in last week's meeting about renovation. And as I talked to some folks this week, just in preparation to give you information, you know, I asked, I said, you know, are we talking about in your mind painting and ceiling tiles and some of that? And the phrase that was used was, no, that's decorating. We're talking about renovating, which would be possibility of closing wings down for possibly a whole school year or the entire building. When you do that, you're looking at portables. So I had one of our staff go back, and what costs $400 to $600 per portable to rent a few years ago, or now $1100 to $1200 per month to rent a portable classroom, which a building holds two, the ones that we were looking at to make apples-to-apples comparison, plus a $6,000 setup fee and a $6,000 takedown fee at the end. So if we did have to renovate, we're talking about something similar to what this body voted to do before I got here next door at the jail. You're talking about, in many cases, a gut. And then you're talking about, are we going to do portables? Or are we going to have to inform those parents? Were we sending, you're sending your kids on a bus, and you're going to have to go to a different school for a year or two and move folks around and really kind of be very, very disturbing to the routine and the routine of elementary students. Of course, that's why so many K through 5 schools still exist, is lots of folks, and data would show that, you know, if we can keep those kids in that same placement in today's uncertainty of just the times leaving out COVID, you know, that minimal changes. Now, there are other districts that do it a different way, and there's research that supports that as well. So if you're talking about a renovation, also, it'd probably be included in that, but I had Mr. Arnold check, and he talked to someone, you're looking at $10 to $15 a square foot to remove asbestos. Now, that would probably or possibly be rolled into the total renovation cost as well. So on a 75,000-square-foot building, Jeff Elementary, and a 60,000 Jeff Elementary, Piedmont Elementary building, you're looking at $1.6 million just to remove the asbestos. So just giving you numbers for everybody to ponder. So on that, in talking to a third party as well, I asked, I said, so are we talking about a complete gut and reno? Does the outside look good, and will it look nice and new and fresh? And they said that would be additional money as well. So when you pull up, the curb appeal would still be the same unless you built in that. So I just wanted to follow up on the renovation there of things. So, you know, I was asked this week as well, the condition of the buildings, how did we get this way over the years? I can't answer that. I know there's been efforts in recent years to really get caught up, and like Ms. Potts said, and some of the others, you know, there has been, over the years, issues haven't been addressed as much as folks would like. And that's not, but in recent years, there's been great efforts made there. Year one, I was here, we assessed some of that, and this board also approved this spring then capital, outlay money, and they've approved just shy of $700,000, I believe, on capital improvements, and that goes to every school. So not only on May did they vote to build two schools, then they also went back and took that needs assessment that they paid for and started knocking off things, and every school campus, with the exception of Patriot Academy, is getting something currently, or it's either in bid process or something, paying with cash. And then they also have $700,000 in the budget this year to go back and continue to take care of buildings. So I just want you to know, we're going to do our best to do that. One question that I received this week, and then I'm done, other than if you have questions, is initially, if you go back and look on the form that we gave you, you've got to remember, this went on, I think, November of 18 is when they first started talking about a needs assessment. It was October of 19 when that report was given here in this very room to the school board. And then plans started to be discussed, again, in January, you had a retreat to really get into that, and then here we are now in July of 20. So when you look at that, on that piece of paper that you all had back in October, the same one the school board got, they had a page, Lewis Group on their needs assessment had an estimated cost for a 600-person elementary school, which was $11,250,000 to $12,400,000. I asked for some updated numbers back in May, following the board's meeting in preparation to give everybody accurate information, and they basically quoted an estimate, again, of $155 per square foot to $170 per square foot, which comes out to 11,625 to 12,700 just for construction. And then, as I shared last week, there are those soft costs. Even when you figure in a 5% contingency, that's $639,000, give or take some change and those kind of things. Again, the board has voted that I gave you the motion. Again, we gave you that, and so if you're asking, how did we get to 29-3? As I said last week, the worst-case scenario would be that I would give you a number, and then we had to come back and ask for additional. So we took the high number on that May estimate of 12,700, or I'm sorry, with a soft cost in 14,651 and per school, and then times two, and then with $100,000 just as, again, to make sure that we had done that. And I have, again, it's just an estimate, hard numbers would be something, that's the pleasure, once the commission gives their approval or a direction that we need to go. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all. I just want to give an update off last week.
Mr. Doctor.
I apologize if I wasn't here last week, Dr. Johnston, but just a few quick, I think quick questions. Does the request, y'all going to need to buy land for these two new schools? If answers yes, does the funding request include funds to purchase land?
There was a discussion back, and I don't remember which meeting or workshop, where the board had expressed interest in trying to buy something or pay cash with something. But the board has not voted to do that. So last week, I clearly said, I took that opinion of soft costs without land in it. So that land does not, but it could be at the pleasure of the board that they decide to use that for land, but then in turn, pay cash for something else. But again, we feel like we can come in under that based on the market.
Does the current request, or will it's soft, does it include demolition cost? If we build two new schools, is the current request include demolition money to tear the two old ones down?
It does not because the board hasn't made a decision on if they're going to sell those or what the plan is to do with those existing buildings.
You mentioned asbestos removal, and I think, and just I'll tell you upfront, I'm wholeheartedly, if we need new schools, I agree with building new schools, not trying to renovate. But I think you said a number for asbestos removal was how much?
$10 to $15 a square foot is what Mr. Arnold found out two or three months ago. So I took the square footage and hit the middle, multiplied it today by 12, just so I could give you an estimate.
Well, you might want to check and make sure. I think I'm telling you right, but I'm pretty sure TDEC regulations say you can't, even if you build a new school, you can't go in there and demolish that building without doing a professional asbestos removal. So if it's 1.3 million, you're still going to spend that on asbestos removal, and is that included in the request?
No. I can read the soft costs if I may. Furniture, fixtures, equipment with an estimate, third-party inspection, and materials, state fire marshal review, architectural and engineering fees, civil engineering fee, and contingency of 5%.
One more quick one.
Sure.
I believe Piedmont Elementary, I believe, has a somewhat pretty old recirculating sand filter for the sanitary sewer treatment system. Is there any provision in the, for the new school? You probably don't know until you know the location, but is there a provision for providing your own sanitary treatment system if it's not being able to connect it to a public utility?
We did talk back to the Lewis Group when they were just giving the board information in the sense of, does this cover those type things? And they would include that as an additional soft cost on that. So again, we would have to find savings in the project for that. Of course, Jefferson Elementary got a better shot of being able to find land in city limits. So that, I mean, that's something that's been talked about, but, you know, that's the pleasure of the board as we get into that, depending on the funding situation.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Good question.
Other questions? Kate.
Okay. Well, I don't know if you can hear me.
Turn to him. Is it on?
It's on. Okay. My understanding is for the Jefferson County High School, school year 2022-2023, it's supposed to be the largest one we've ever had over there, 2,300 kids, which I would think it wouldn't be realistic to put Patriot Academy into the main campus. Is that correct? I mean, am I?
Our currently, our four largest groups right now are 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th grades. So if you just add up those and then move them forward two years, you're looking at 2,347 kids, based on, I ran those numbers in March, 1st to April, somewhere in there. So, yes, that would be very difficult until that number then starts circulating back down. Our freshmen last year, our current rising sophomores had 600 in the class, our incoming freshmen this year are 550. Most of the grades are somewhere just right at 5 on average. But these four are the four highest, 7, 8, 9, 10. So in 22-23, they will be 9 through 12.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnston.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item, two resolutions from Finance Director. Resolution 2020-34, that's a resolution to declare surplus for Dandridge Library. Have a motion by Mr. Blavin, second by Mr. Seals. You may go ahead and vote. Motion passes 19-0. Resolution 2020-35, this is a resolution to declare surplus for Jefferson County High T Department. Motion by Mr. Seals, second by Mr. Fergens. You may go ahead and vote. Passes 19-0. Mr. Potts, you have the floor, you have a presentation for County Commission?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I gave a presentation to the Budget Committee about our debt situation and financial situation. I wanted to give you a real quick update of just the summary of that. We have it up there. Okay. So two or three notes here. I've been saying for quite a time, quite a bit of time, that in 2024, our debt service drops off and would allow us to have the flexibility for additional needs for the county. We asked two independent operations, that's Cumberland Securities Company and the County Technical Assistance Service, more commonly known as C task. Their results were the same as mine. We can do this project with no tax increase, and we can do this and still have flexibility to do future county and school projects. I'll show you that on a chart here in just a minute. We use conservative projections during the budget in 2020. When you asked me to put the budget together, I was real concerned about sales tax, property tax, all revenues. I used 9% reduction, if you recall, in the sales tax number. And we, and in this projection here out through the future, we used, we started with those same amounts, and we worked forward, keeping it flat. We didn't show any growth in property tax, sales tax in that, in that analysis. Last, last month, you all approved unanimously Resolution 2019, 2020-19 for the Special Revenue Fund, and among the things that we identified there, the use of that fund was to supplement the budget, reducing the need to raise property taxes or cut services during an economic downtime. If you're worried about what's going on right now, we currently have about $7.7 million in that reserve, which I don't think we're going to need, but that's there. Talking to C tasks, they said most companies would love to be in the position we are where we've got a backup. Our current Moody's rating is AA3. That means we're high-quality and subject to very low credit risk. Our property tax rate is, there are 70 counties in the state of Tennessee, 70% of the counties, excuse me, in the state of Tennessee have a higher property tax than we currently have, 70% of the 95 counties. Our interest rate on the bond that we refunded last month was less than 2%. We're not going to have interest rates any lower than we have them right now in our lifetime, in my opinion. If you flip over to the first chart, this is the chart that shows you what I'm talking about. The top line here, can't get my pointer to work, but the top line, the blue line, all the way across is the projection on revenue, just slightly above $7 million. This does not include the nursing home because it's not funded by, by property tax or any other kind of tax. So we've excluded this from this analysis, so it doesn't mislead you. If you look at the bar charts, those are the different bonds that we have today, and what they add up to by year, I'm sorry, the bond payments by year. So if you look at the year that we just finished, it was just short of $7 million in total bond payments. You see, there's about three years there, or three years in the future, through 2023, where that's pre-level, then in 2024, that number drops off. The blue line that moves along with those bars just shows you the consolidation of those, of those numbers. If you go to the next chart, this is if you add $30 million over a 30-year period. We've lost the video there, but that shows what happens if we do 30 million over the next 30 years. You'll see that those bars still don't get up to our revenue line of almost $7 million, conservative revenue line. The space between those two, the bar charts by year and that line item, is the amount we still have available for future projects, whether it be county or school. We don't, we don't need a tax increase to do this $30 million using conservative revenue numbers, and we've got two independent companies that are, that are backing up what I'm telling you. I have the full reports that I gave to the Budget Committee last week. I'll be glad to distribute those to the rest of you if you'd like to have it. But this, this is, these two charts are the summary of what we talked about. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Potts. Next item is Budget Committee. First item is General Fund 101, Amendment 1, Items 1 through 6. We're going to get our roll call back up here. General Fund 101, Amendment 1, Items 1 through 6. Doesn't really need a motion or a second coming from the Budget Committee. You may go ahead and vote. Passes 19-0. Next item, General Fund 171, Amendment 1, Item 1. Recommendation from Budget Committee. You may go ahead and proceed to vote. Passes 19-0. Next item, Other Capital Projects Fund, Amendment 1, Item 1. You may go ahead and vote. Passes 19-0. Next item, Other Capital Projects Fund. Senior Funding, General Fund 101, Amendment 2, and this is a recommendation from Budget Committee. Quick explanation, real quick, this is funds that were left over when we did $10,000 to feed our seniors this year. We're adding, what's the figure? It'll be a total of $25,000 out of our COVID-19 funding, but all we need is a budget amendment. This will provide each senior center with $5,000 each. Is that correct?
Thank you. I was struggling for that figure there. What? Please. The COVID-19 grant that we received, we approved that during the budget process. There was already money set aside that we can use for a little over $20,000 of the $25,000. So we don't need a budget amendment to do, or we already said we were going to do this amount, though, we do need a budget amendment on it. It's not covered anywhere. Any questions?
Real quick, let me just, while we're here, get on the go. During the time that we fed people during the early part of COVID-19, with the volunteers that we used and with the money that you helped provide, we operated that program for 10 weeks. I won't brag on people in the county here real quick. We delivered 3,667 hot meals. We delivered 491 weekly grocery boxes, and we gave out 140 weekend grocery boxes. And you did that out of 10,000, still had 4,000 left over, but you're returning to our senior centers. We're putting 20,000 with it, and each one will get 5,000 to help them through. So that's what we can do in Jefferson County when we, when we have a need and we work together. So that's what we can do in Jefferson County when we, when we have a need and we work together. So. This is a one-time, one-time deal to do this. This is to help our seniors that are unable to have fundraisers at this time to offset their expenses. We have COVID-19 money, so we're adding that to what we had left over. So each senior center in the county will get $5,000 to help them with their expenses in the coming years. So we don't need a motion or a second. It's already passed 19-0. So next item, I have a, do you have a general fund 101 amendment? Capital project 189 in your packet? As a pass-through fund, if you remember from New Market Utility. Do you have that in the packet? So other capital projects fund 189 amendment one, CDVT money for the New Market Utility District. It costs us nothing. We simply pass, they give us the money and we give it to somebody else. So if you can figure the logic of that out, I don't know, but that's what we do. You can go ahead and vote. Passes 19-0. Next item, general purpose fund 141. Amendment one items one through four for schools. Comes from budget committee, needs no motion or second. I'm going to go ahead and vote. Passes 19-0. Next item has a recommendation from the budget committee is a bond for Jefferson Park. We will have to come back in October for a resolution to meet all those bond requirements. Mr. Chairman, you have anything to add?
No, sir, but we've got, we'll have to, we can either pass this now or wait until a resolution. One, because the resolution, it will take the resolution to activate the sale of the bond. So it's a pleasure, committee, or a pleasure to mention how we proceed.
Either way, the resolution will have to come in October.
It has, you have to have the resolution before, like, if Mr. Langley starts the process. Is that right, Mr. Langley?
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Manning? So it'd be a pleasure, so I see a motion by Mr. Carmichael, a second by Mr. Byrd. Discussion amendments. I'm going to go ahead and vote. Keep in mind, the resolution will come in October in order for the issue of bond. This is not the bond.
The resolution has to pass.
Yes.
For this to be, this vote, all this votes indication is warranted. This is not, it's not binding.
Thank you. It passes 19-0. Next item. I think we're down to new business. That brings us to election of constable for the first district. I haven't received it. Mr. Herndon, do you have? We have Michael Brandon Hager. Does anybody have any other nominations? Received any nominations? So we present the name of Michael Brandon Hager for constable in District One. Have a motion by Mr. Keston, second by Ms. Hupbaker. I'm going to go ahead and vote. Passes 19-0. Next item, resolution 2020-32. It's rezoning C2 to R1 and your map is included with it. This comes from zoning committee. Need motion and second. Have a motion by Mr. Scarlett, second by Mr. Reed. Any discussion? I'm going to go ahead and vote. Passes 18-0, want abstain. Next item, Heidi Thomas requests, has a motion for a new school fund.
Yes. This motion is to request approval of a $29.3 million bond to fund the building of two new elementary schools to replace Jefferson Elementary and Piedmont Elementary. Funding for contingency is included in this bond amount.
Motion, let me make sure I get it correct. Motion to approve 29.3 million to build two elementary schools. Could we say is recommended by the school board with that covering? Might be fine. We have a motion, we have a second by Ms. Langley. Mr. Byrd would like to speak.
Yes, I, first off, I want to recognize Jefferson Elementary, the faculty, the administration and the staff. I got to tour your facility this weekend and I got to tour Piedmont today. I saw the condition of the school and was shocked at how the school safety issues had been ignored by our school system and our school board. But I also saw how you have gone far and above what is required of you to make the best of the situation. I teach also, I understand what you're going through. I met a teacher even painting her own classroom with her own money and her own time. God bless her heart, I did the same thing two years ago. This was apparent in many other areas of the school that they have carried the burden for making an atmosphere of learning pleasant for our students without help from our school system and our school board. Maintenance at this school has been ignored for many years. The outer windows are being held by L brackets screwed into concrete and into the windows to hold them in place. This has been, there's been an approval three times to replace those windows by the school board. I mean, by the commission to the school board. They've still not been changed since I was in school in the 1960s. What has happened to the money that went for those schools, for those windows? I was informed that there, there has been no major innovations or renovations at the school in the last eight or nine years. You've just let the school fall apart, I guess, to the situation we're in now. We could have fixed this a while back. Once again, take responsibility. The wall you were talking about, you just saw it to see through. They filled it full of caulk now. Late, you know, caulk is holding that wall, yeah. That's good fix for that wall, correct? There is no sprinkler system in the school. The electrical system is to full capacity. You can't add no more breakers to it, no more electrical sockets. I went to Jefferson Elementary. I started there in 1967. It was eighth grade. I also did my student, student observation there when I went back to school. I worked as a substitute teacher there, so no one has more love for that school than myself. I saw the pride when the person that was taking us through, talking about the marble tile and stuff. The problem is here, any, the renovations that were done were halfway done. In the, in the cafeteria, they took about a quarter of the tiles up that had asbestos, but they left the rest of the cafeteria tiles down. You talk about the, the painting, I mean, their lead paint and stuff. There was no, no, nobody has done anything to try to, to do anything about that. We've been told, the removal of the asbestos will be three to $4 million. That's what they told us last week. Today, they're saying 1.6. And then the windows, you have whole walls of windows there. The kids cannot hide, hide behind. We talked about this when we returned to school. Why did they not have the reflective screen on the back of it so no one could see in and see those school? You know, the students in the school. Little things like that. Those are safety issues that have been ignored for our students. And as we've talked before, they came here and I voted against the 2.4 million dollars for the athletic facilities. And I wasn't here when they did the 400,000 for the baseball. That's almost $3 million. And I was told at the time, we need to spend this money now while we have it before we start doing maintenance and we don't have the money to spend it later. What is wrong with the priorities our school system has? Talking about relocating the school, buying another, that school needs to stay where it's at. You have Barnabees, you have all these playgrounds around it. There is land around that school if you want to build a new school. There's a big hill right there beside the school. Knock it off, if we have to build a new school, but the school needs to stay in that area. You have the four lane there, you have the hospital close. What's the first thing they clean off when they get the snow off? The four lanes and the way to the hospital. You have Barnabees Playground, it was a community effort that was there. A lot of people put a lot of work in that. My granddaughter had her birthday party there and while we were touring the outside of it, we saw several people, several children playing on all the playgrounds in that area. If that school is torn down, all those playgrounds will be gone also. So you talk about thinking about the kids, we need to think about that. If we do build a new school, it needs to go back right there in that area. Same way with the middle school. There's land around it. Don't do like we did with Patriot Academy and go a mile or two down the road. We could have built that on the property that was there. And I was told the reason why we didn't build Pod 6, if we added on to the high school, we had to bring the rest of the school up to code. If you know there's a problem with the code in the rest of the school, why are you not fixing it? Like I said, first off, I know this is just a rant, I'm pitching a fit, but it hurt me to see the shape the two schools were in. I've grown up here, I was born in Jefferson City. Like I said, it just is, it's intolerable, the way the schools have been treated and the way the teachers and the faculty have been treated, ignored for everything you do. I appreciate you, appreciate everything you've done for that school. Thank you.
Just clarification, are you speaking in favor or against the motion?
Against.
Okay. Just, I just want to make sure.
I bet, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to speak in favor of the two schools.
Thank you.
And I may ramble a little bit, but there's different points I want to make. And one of, one of them has to do with student population and growth in the county. So we've had this idea brought up that the children are going to be taken by private schools and our pop, student population is going to decrease. Well, I've checked around with planning people, real estate. Right now, there's an increase in housing and growth, housing growth in our county. Therefore, I would think we should have some growth in our schools. There's multiple new subdivisions being built on the north and the south side of the county, so it's all over. It's not just in one area. Several people in real estate have told me that the demand is greater than the supply for housing right now in Jefferson County. I would say some of this increase is due to new jobs. People want to retire here. There's businesses, new businesses in Hamlin County, Jefferson County, businesses are expanding. And now with COVID, so one person told me on the national news station, they said that everybody's moving to two states and one of them is Tennessee. And that's what real estate people are telling me they're seeing too. So we're going to continue, continue to see growth. When it comes to school vouchers, we have a private school in the area. When you look at the exterior of that building, it's built for a middle and high school. It has two full gyms and a large performing arts center. So when you look at it, you're not just looking at all classrooms. It's a regional draw from multiple counties, Jefferson, Hamlin, Granger, Green, Cock, as well as Knox. It's built for families seeking Christian learning and it's a smaller atmosphere and they have a selective application process, I've been told. So they're, so it's attracting certain type of student. And the point being, it's not going to drain all the students out of our school system. Sure, it might grab a handful, but we still are going to have the need to provide schools for our kids and good schools. Like Commissioner Byrd, I visited Jefferson Elementary and my take, staff's doing a great job. That school was clean. I was really impressed with it. And the maintenance department's trying to do low-cost dollar cosmetic changes that the staff appreciates. But my overview of the school, it's 62 years old. It needs electrical, plumbing, foundation repairs. It's not cosmetic touch-ups, it's major gut and renovation repairs. The electrical panels are so full, they can't add new spots. It can't support the new technologies such as Peramethian boards, security, security system upgrades. You can't add new circuits. The electrical panels FPE, which no longer exists, breaker boxers they get now don't fit. Bathroom plumbing backs up into the urinals and commodes. Some of the urinals have been taken out of service, capped off because of this. The gym has large, multiple cracks in the, the walls, exterior walls. If you go in the office areas, there's four offices that the walls are cracked. It looks like the whole side of the building is going to, has moved. And then when you get into renovation, there's all kinds of asbestos, windows have lead paint. Your children aren't going to be able to stay in that building. The estimated cost to renovate it, 6.6 million, when we could build a new one for 12 to 15. Some of the comments I've heard from residents in the community are that kids deserve better than that and they don't want another Band-Aid fix as a taxpayer. So in my opinion, the school board tells us what we, they need. The finance director tells us if we can afford it and how. And he, he has identified that we can afford it with no tax increase and the rates are better than ever right now. My job's to decide whether or not to support it and if I think it's best for the taxpayers. Well, I think in the long run, our taxpayers would be better off paying for a new building instead of doing, spending half the money to repair the building. Commissioner Byrd brought up, the property's good. I agree. I love the, the location and maybe they can put Jefferson Elementary back there. But I think for the taxpayers, it's better to build these new buildings now when the rates are low. We've got finances set aside if something bad really happens and I hope you support this motion too.
Thank you. Autumn, be fair, Mr. Reed, you speaking in favor or against?
Sorry.
Fight, in favor of the motion or against?
Yes.
You may proceed.
When I say against, I'm not against the teachers because I see what you guys have went through. I wish we had rattled the cage numerous times over the last years. If I had known, I would have. My concern is, and we can what if to that, what if it to death, as has been said, but we realistically have to look at the money coming into the county. We just had a citizen speak from Parry's Chapel. We've ignored Parry's Chapel for years. Go take a look at that area if you want to see an area within the county that we're responsible for that we're not taking care of. That we have probably done a pretty good job of not taking care of things over the years. I would love to say, yes, let's do this, but there's too many what ifs. We got a budget that we balanced by COVID money this year or we would have been right at a million dollars short. So what if that happens next year? What if? Where are we going to get the money to balance that? My concern is that if we do this, what is the guarantee that we're not going to have some of the same issues down the road? Because we do not put money into the system to repair the stuff. I know there were several times that commission gave money to have windows replaced. I've seen in Piedmont, windows replaced except for one backside where they're probably the windows that were put in the school originally. And all you have to do is walk around Jefferson Elementary and realize nothing's been done to those windows since the building was built. So yes, we have serious problems. The state just got 1.5 billion. Teachers are not going to get a raise this year because of lack of money. That is a big what if. I can't morally say that I would give out $30 million when I know that EMS needs ambulances, when I know that Parry Chapel needs money, that the citizens of this county need things done. We've got buildings in Jefferson City that are standing there. Is that what's going to happen to Jefferson Elementary School? Are we going to leave it there? Because who in the world would want to buy it with all the problems that we're talking about tonight? Or should we tear it down and build a new building? I just don't have, I have a responsibility to citizens of my district and either they'll vote me back in or they won't the next time around. But I cannot morally say that I'll agree to the $30 million. There is a question, what's the number of students coming back? And yes, I sat in the retreat back in January. I listened. I heard a lot of caring. Even when I started hearing. Even when I started hearing figures going around, I did not raise my hand and say, I don't really agree with that. I didn't feel it was my place to speak there, but I've made my feelings known over the last couple of months. And I would ask the commission to seriously think about this. The figures I have from prioritized school by school improvements plan for Jefferson Elementary is right at 7 million dollars of improvements or renovation and about, well, over 5 million at Piedmont. I also have thought about, like Patriots Academy, it can hold up to 1,000 students. Isn't there some way that we could realistically look at some things and maybe come up with something that would not cost us 30 million dollars to do when we got so many other parts of the county that are hurting? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I have two people wanting to speak, Mr. Dockery and Mr. Douglas. Either one of you speaking in favor of the motion?
If you're asking, I'm speaking in favor or against?
Are you in favor of the motion or against the motion?
I'm a coin up in the air right now, so I'm going to say against.
I asked somebody that knows what.
I'll say against.
Okay, are you speaking in favor or against the motion, Mr. Dockery?
I'm speaking against at present in time, but with more information, I could be forwarding.
All right, I tried to point mine.
Are you in favor of the motion, Ms. Langman?
I'm in favor and I'm going to risk COVID.
Okay.
So I can hear me.
I'm, I'm trying to keep it even, so I'm trying to.
Yeah, I know you are. I too have gone through the facilities. Folks, it is jaw-dropping, the mess we've got. We've been told we've got money. We've also, I've heard it documented and said this past week that there, somebody's against or we're against throwing money, just throwing money at our schools. This is not throwing money at our schools. This is investing in our future and our teachers and our children. There's nothing better we can do for this county than to support our school system. If we are told we've got the money, why do we want to keep putting it off? And I frankly, as a new commissioner, I am tired of hearing about what hasn't been done. That's water under the bridge. It's time to build a new bridge. Let's be more disciplined. But it's time, folks, it is time. When you have to caulk a wall together, folks, come on. I don't believe we've got a parent in this county who would walk through Jefferson Elementary and hear presentations that we've heard, or Piedmont, and hear what we've heard, and you would want your child there. There's also something to be said, as an old school teacher, for the morale of our faculty. I heard today of folks who have to get there early on a rainy day to see if a room is flooded, how many buckets they need to put out to catch water. This is ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. Mr. Potts tells us we've got the money. It's time to poop or get off the fence.
Thank you. I've, we've heard of two in favor and two against, the other two, one's want to toss a coin, the other one said no.
I'd be pleased to play both, though.
Okay, you want to close, Ms. Thompson?
You know, I made the motion.
Do what now? Hold on one minute. Go ahead, Tony, I'll, two more, the two that's up.
I'd be real brief. As I said, when Mr. Potts asked our stance on the opinion, unless we can answer some more questions, that some of which I asked tonight, I can't support it this time, but I think that the people we represent, we need to be, if we commit 29 million dollars, which we don't have, by the way, but we can borrow, we need to be able to answer all the questions. Or the people I represent, when they ask questions, I want to be able to answer them. I want to tell them where the new schools are going to be, that, that that's being considered. Well, I want to know what the demolition cost is. I want to know what the disposition is for the other two schools. It's just I can't good conscience support it tonight without, without knowing those things. So my opinion is, I, I would hope the school board could give us more, make more decisions and give us more direction on it so that we can get a better defined scope. And having a better, well-defined scope will give us a better number on what it takes to do this. It may be more, it may be less, but I don't really care, a lot of people don't care for surprises. The, the second part of it, and this is not meant to sway or influence anybody one way or another, I don't know the future of the public school system any better than anyone else. My personal opinion is, I tend to think vouchers are coming, it's no matter if, it's a matter of when. I have no idea what that would do to enrollment, but I, I would ask people to consider and think about this well ahead of time. If we build two new schools and for whatever reason, two, three, four, five years from now, if enrollment does significantly drop, I think it's safe to say the new schools aren't going to be closed. Mount Horvath's going to be here, the two new ones will be here. We've spent about 4 million recently at White Pine. So if the storm comes together and we build these schools, enrollment, the bottom drops out, are you prepared, if you have to, to close some of the older schools who are still sitting there needing millions of dollars of work? So the decision that, that's made now, down the road, could be mean closing Piedmont, New Market, Rush Strong, some of the older schools, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas, you still want to speak?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Scar. You for or against?
At this point, neither.
Okay. Well, I'm laying third candle here.
I've got something I want to say, and I've, I've got an amendment this way. First off, let me make the disclosure based on our ethics thing. My wife works for the school system. That has zero to do with what I'm fixing to say or what I'm fixing to offer. So that right up front has nothing to do. I served on the school board with Ms. Potts, Mr. Johnnington. I've seen this from both sides. It's not a pleasant journey, never is. I think we've got a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens in the county to be good stewards. I think we've got the responsibility to those kids to invest in me. But what I, I guess I, I tend to fall on the side of Mr. Dockery here. I'd like to see some more meat on these numbers. I understand these are estimates and they're broad estimates. There's a lot of, Mr. Kesterson made a very good point in our budget committee. He'd like to see some more stuff, he'd like to have some more information about what's going to go on. And I would too. I think Mr. Reed would, is, from what he said, is kind of that way too. I, I would like to see these numbers honed back. I would like to see them a little closer with some more meat on what we're doing, wrote down, for however we get there. So what I'm going to offer is this. Either way we go, we need to give you all a direction. Because there's a lot of roads been paved with squirrels could make up for mine. So what I would like to make an amendment, Mr. Chairman, is from what I interpret the school board's motion. Two schools, elementary, same district, is that correct, Mr. Johnson? Proximally 600 to, so I assume they're going to be probably mirror images except for site location and differential. And that would be something that the board needs to discuss. But here's what I want to be, and if I get a second, I'll, I'll speak more to it. I'd like to propose that we fund up to half with a cap. And if Dr. Johnson might have that figure, I'd like to ask him this if I get a second. If we fund the engineering.
You have a second.
I've got a second. Do you have?
Maybe not.
Do you have any kind of figure in, for the, what it would take to get the engineering for one of the schools to where we can hone these figures and get them down pretty precise and know what we're looking at prior to vote for this? Do you have any idea?
It's a, it's a wide range. I did make some phone calls just to try to have some information for everybody. Depending on, you know, the direction everybody went. So I talked to a group not affiliated with the project. I didn't talk to, they're not one of the five finalists to be chosen as architect, nor are they one of the seven that didn't get chosen. I thought those phone calls might have not been returned pleasantly. So I got another to get us through, a design phase using an architect on a project based on what's going on around the state, 300 to 500,000 dollars architectural fee to get us to that systemic design phase right there. And the person said you also have the ability, said it should be closer to the three than the five based on this being elementary schools and not all the athletic facilities and things that middle school and high schools have to design that. But also said that, you know, the body, be it the school board and/or the county commission, has the ability to just say, here's what we need. We want it designed to get us to that point for X amount of dollars. And if, if the architects unwilling to do that, move down the depth chart to the next one on the list to see if they'll. So three to five is a number I had worked on previously.
So my amendment is to ask the school board if they're willing to partner with us and we will pay half of the engineering to get this to schematic design for one school right now to see where we go. And in that way, we can make a decision based on the money, up to 375,000 dollars. That gets you above that, paid for out of the fund balance of both bodies. If the school board would be willing to partner, that's 183,000 feet, up to 183,000 feet.
187.
Oh, 187, okay.
187?
187. All right, sorry. 187, five, I'm wrong.
So the motion is to amend?
To amend this bond, or to amend this to give the school board and the county commission, instead of 30 million dollars, is for us to spend up to 375,000 dollars, half out of each body's fund balance, if the school board would agree to come on board. But our offer would be half of that, 375,000, to reach, I think I'm remembering right, up to schematic design on the engineering. And then that would allow the school board to find out what the range of that number is and actually come back to us to see where we're going to go and which direction. And then after that, we can give you direction about whether the board or whether the commission is willing to fund. I understand from Mr. Langman and CPAS and Community Security that we can't afford it. I think that the body here has got to decide if we want to obligate the citizens to this, if we want to obligate the county and the debt. I don't think the issue is about whether we can or can't afford it. I think it's what we're comfortable with and I think we've got to decide and give them a, a direction.
Thank you, Mr. Kesterson.
The question I have is, we just did Mount Horvath last year, year before last, whenever the date was. What, what is the capacity of that school?
You, you're, you're pretty much at capacity at 650-ish. Currently, as the school year ended, Dan Rich had 608, Mount Horvath had 589, 593. You know, there the last week or two, sometimes, you know, the numbers. Of course, we were in COVID mode too as far as distance learning, so. But both those schools are at 600. The third biggest elementary school is White Pine, at 552, near the last, in grades K5.
Okay, and, and Dr. Johnson, the reason I'm asking that is, if we decide to go into a building project, is it not doable to use the same plans that we used there?
After some research, we do not own those plans. Nor for that, nor Patriot Academy. There was a lot of speculation that we did, but after we've tried to track that down and we did not. I'll continue to research that, but I'll check on that. And one of the, yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Okay, oh, you, you done? You know, it's just the timing of this whole thing. And I deal with companies that have got budgets the size of this county. And right now, you walk in there, it's hard to get them to spend 10, 15,000 dollars on something that is broke that they need. And, yeah, I think this is, I've been on here six years, I think this is my third time with the school board. And I don't mean this pointedly toward everybody or anybody, but it always seems like it's an emergency when it comes up to us. And, you know, I sure would have liked to have known that we were going to be looking at 30 million dollars two years ago or so when we spent 4 million over to high school. You know, that would have been, because if we can, I think Katie said something about we could revamp one school for 6.6 million, well, we spent 4 million over to high school, well. That's why I'm, I think I'm going to support what Commissioner Scarlett has come up with here. It gives us time to see where some of this COVID stuff's going to go, but it also, it gives us a little bit clearer direction. And we need some direction. I know Mr. Potts has got the bar graph here and everything, but I have no doubt, no doubt whatsoever, that this graph from 2029 to 2036 will be filled up with something. I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not naive enough to think this is the only thing that's going to come up. And, you know, I know there's phases, you know. When is phase two going to come along? I don't know, you know. Be good to know, you know, six months a year ahead of time, but anyway. So that's why I think I'll support Commissioner Scarlett.
Mr. Reed, I have a question for Dr. Johnson, please. Dr. Johnson, do you have any figures on the enrollment now for the coming year? Has it dropped any or is it about the same or?
You know, we, we always, about two weeks out, you know, you're going to be quite a bit, you know, you're scrambling to get everybody in. So we extended the Gateway online registration, that actually just started last year. So, I mean, based on the end of year and talking to people, are they coming back? The answer is right now, yes, we've even had some homeschool students that have said with that distance learning option, we're planning on coming back. So hard numbers we wouldn't have right now. Attendance clerks just came back today in a couple of buildings, it's actually tomorrow, just the way the schedule worked out. So they'll be getting calls and registering people at each building over the next few days. But this time of year, you know, we're always, because, because so many folks, because that's the way it was done for years, you just kind, if you ended at Jeff Elementary, you came back the first day and started, you know, and those things. Most of the teachers, and I can try to verify with teachers, but I would say most of this group behind me has already reached out because they have their rosters and they've called their students one by one and those kind of things. And I can find out from principal, if they're seeing teachers come back and say, hey, you, there's 22 on my row, but 17 of them. You know, we, we do have a large number, based on the current situation, that have requested distance learning. More so in grades four through 12.
Mr. Fay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Scarlett, just want to clarify on your motion. If it passes, what happens to the original motion?
If it replaces, the verbiage is to replace that motion, get us some more figures. Whatever time it takes, they'll come back. I'm not opposed to calling a special meeting, but it will allow us to decide then what that money is versus renovation or demolition or whatever. It doesn't preclude their motion, it just says, hey, we need some more motion. We need some more numbers and we need some firmals.
I was just making sure I understood correctly, it would vacate the motion that's currently on the floor?
Yes, it would. That, that is my amendment, is to strike the verbiage of 30 million and move to, for them to come back, offer them to pay half. And, and I would, I would state also in the motion, if it's all right, Mr. Bayles, it's his second, that once we, if, if we were to pass this, if this was to pass, then we would, our end's done. It would be up to the school board to accept the offer and match their half.
Ms. Thompson. I've got a question for the parliamentarian. Okay, if I vote no for the amendment? And I vote yes for the motion, say the motion fails. Can I make a motion after the first motion that is the same wording as the amendment?
You can make a new motion.
You can make a new motion. It's no longer an amendment. So you could make them, you could make a motion that says this, since it's not an amendment.
And parliamentarian wise, I'll be okay to have essentially the same? Amendment as a motion?
Not amendment. You can make a motion.
Motion, the same as your amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Bayles.
I don't get real good feelings about 30 million passing right now. And, uh, and John Neil's talked about it a little bit. I want to keep it moving forward. We need to do something for the school regardless. If you want to put more coke in the in the crack? By all means, you do that in your conscience. My conscience said we need to keep moving forward. And I think this is how we do it, because that way we get the hard numbers that the people are against it. We'll say, okay, here's the numbers. That is, that's our reason I am for. I'm? I am for it, but I want to make this real work physically responsible. But to me, this would be the first step to allow the school board to continue? Pursue? This.
Ms. Langman.
This may be totally out of order and there may not be anybody can answer it. But with John Neal's motion? Commissioners, how low? Would they have to come in? For us to approve this thing? I mean, how many millions have they got to cut out? Before we say let's go for our children in this county? We're also, we want to blame them for pushing it down the road. We're pushing it down the road. We just keep on pushing it down the road. How low have they got to come in for us to approve this thing? I don't know whether there's an answer there or not, but you know, I mean, how low really, how much have they got to cut out? For us to be okay with this? When we better our schools, we better our county. We've let it go too long. And we've done it as a commission too. They're not the only ones. We've done it too.
Mr. Carmel.
Well? Got two or three questions I'm going to throw out here. And I want everybody to take a hard listen because I'm vehemently against it. And in the zest to run out and start a project, nobody ever stops and thinks, well, do we want to do the project well? Or do we just want to do a project? This is the question at hand. Now, Mr. Scarlett's thrown out a solution to that. We just now learned that we don't even have the plans to the license you school that was built. So? Hmm, that might be an interesting topic to address also. But you know, first off, it's not the county commission's fault that school fell down. It's not the county commission's fault that building eight fell down. And I mean, I hate to be the bad guy in this deal, but it's time to start pointing fingers at people and saying, hey? All these teachers that come in here and supported you school? I want to see the video of when you come to the school board and told them last year how bad the school was. Or was we systematically turned the building down to get a new one? Now, you know, I've got a lot of phone calls this week about this and I've only got two text messages for it. And I had a lot of phone conversation about it. And what I'm saying is, is in your zest to run out and want to do something because it's the right thing to do, are you doing it to the best that you can do it? The question is, there's a lot of questions here that's never been answered, never been touched on. If I'm going to sign my name to spend in taxpayer dollars, I'm going to get every dollar's worth of every taxpayer money? That I can get for them kids. Now, kids get beat all the time. Now, we all know the shape of the schools. They ain't no big story. It ain't the county commission's fault. The county commission didn't do that. You can't throw rocks over here at us because it wasn't our doing. It's the school board's doing. So you got to point the finger at the proper people at the proper time. So you need a plan. So, okay, we need a well-thought-out plan. We don't just need a plan. A plan, if you read the warranty papers on your car on the way, on the way over here tonight, it may or may not run. It's not guaranteed, but we'll try to fix it. So let's put some intelligent thought into what we're doing. You got to give yourself thought and say, okay, did I cover all my marks? In such a hurry to do this, did anybody ask if Mount Horvath? Who owned the blueprint? I think we got blueprints to Jefferson County High School date back 1976. But you know, if you don't own a plan and you ain't got a plan, how could you stand here and truthfully tell us? How something's going to be built and what it's going to cost? You don't know. You're guessing. It's called educated guess. Sometimes educated guesses work and sometimes they don't. But you know, we throwed a lot of money at some football and athletics here when we should have been throwing money at buildings. I know four times I voted for windows at Piedmont that never did happen. I thought about pulling a BLM, go down there and knock them all out and see if they could put them back. See if we get the federal government to put the windows up, because that's the only way they're going to get put up. Somebody needs to knock them out. And I mean that. Because it ain't getting done. Okay, all your new buildings that's done being built, I think Mount Horvath flooded the first week it had a roof on it. Pretty sure that happened. Okay, drain field gives trouble all the time. So just because you got that brand new car, don't mean you're going to make it home in it now. You can still run that thing in the ditch. So if we're going to do it, I mean, just like Mount Horvath, the playground water don't run off of it. Got a phone call about that here a few weeks back. Well, how can we make water? I said water won't run up that uphill. Has to be downhill. But you know, that was a problem in engineering. Nobody gave it any thought. So here we are again. Let's just throw money at a problem and see what sticks to the wall. Me, I'm tired of it. I don't want to hear it no more. I really don't. I can sit over here and start sailing, smile and be happy with everybody, but there comes a point in your life, you got to say, did I do this well or am I just doing something? That is my issue with the whole thing. I'll rest.
Thanks, sir. Seeing no other requests to speak? We will mo-vote on the amendment to the motion, which will supersede the motion? By replacing it and it will be 187,500 funded by the county? 187,500 funded by the school?
Up to?
Up to 375,000.
I think so.
That's the amendment. You wish to speak, Ms. Thomas, you, did you have?
Yeah, I have a question. What happens if the school board decides to have to fund that? 187,000 dollars?
Done. We've made the note. We've extended the offer to them and they'll, they'll have to come back for another proposal.
Then that kills everything.
No, ma'am. It it allows them to make the decision. And I would caution? Any on the body. I I know you want to make recommendations and I know you want to? Tell them where to put the school and all that, but but we got to be careful. We don't step over the line. We're not on the school.
No, I'm I'm not talking about, I'm just talking, we're, we're passing an amendment that requires? If in order to make this amendment work, the school board has to vote to spend 187,000 dollars. My question is, what if they vote not to spend 187,000 dollars? What happens then?
They'll have to bring us a proposal.
For what?
For whatever that they wish to, they can bring back the other proposal, put it back on the agenda, call for a special meeting, do whatever they want. But this, this allows them to? Make progress.
So we're voting on the amendment to the motion.
Mr. Bay, one quick question.
Alright.
If we, if we spend the 375,000, this project don't come, does not come through this in the future, is that money just out there?
No, that they would have the plans at some point in time, whether it's a year or five years down the road. If you chose to do that, they would have a head start on building. And it may be two years before we can be, I don't know. I'm just saying.
Uh, would you consider that front cost that had to be spent anyway?
Either way we go, they would have to, we'll have to vote this.
Mr. Bayles.
My vote has nothing to do with the fact that my wife works in the school system. I know the ethics.
Okay. Alright. Let's go ahead and vote. Go ahead and vote. On the amendment. Everybody vote? Amendment passes 13 to 6. Next up.
Motion is amended. You got to go to the original? You got to go to the motion?
The motion is amended. I'm sorry, we got a lot going on here. So now we're back to the motion as amended. So we go down to amendment. Now we're voting on the motion. Ms. Thomas, would you like to address your motion?
No, sir. She's. This verbiage replaced that motion.
That's right.
So what you're voting on is essentially what you voted on just a minute ago.
So the motion is amended. For 187,500 on the part of the county, 187,500 on the part of the school board, with the engineering upfront?
Cost. Yes, and bring us back harder numbers, numbers that have the thing. You're essentially voting on what you voted on amendment, because it replaces the language of Ms. Thomas's motion.
Voting on the motion as amended? You may go ahead and vote. Passed 13 to 6. Next up, Mr. Fagan, you have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I rise to the point of order.
Go right ahead.
There has been some questions, Mr. Fagan. And I have called different ones. And based on the ambiguity of the language, what I would like to ask this commission is? All I can do is parliamentarians make a recommendation. Chairman has?
To rule.
To rule. But the chairman's authority extends as far as the body allows. So what I would like to ask this commission is to take a vote? On how they want that ethics policy enforced. Do you want it enforced at, at the highest level? Do you have room? This body? Can do whatever they want. But if the way I interpreted for myself as parliamentarian? That was my recommendation to the chairman. So I would like to ask that this body vote yea or nay? Based on that? To say? Yes, that is allowed or no, it's not.
Would you please restate your parliamentary?
Well, the?
Position.
The position was that Mr. Seals? Couldn't second, couldn't second the motion because of? He's a county employee. If? The recommendation was to build or renovate? The buildings and it included his office, there could be perceived benefit.
But the policy doesn't say benefit. It says financial, not just benefit. He doesn't benefit financially, was my point.
Well, this is a problem because ethics are not? There's the legal side of it, then there's the right and wrong. And it what it could be perceived.
Let me ask a question real quick. That does not preclude any county employee from voting on it?
No, I'm just asking that this body vote one way or the other? That that is, if if we want to allow that, there are several people on here, myself included? That have people that work for? Either the school system or the county or? Whatever. I'm just asking for clarification, how this body wants to handle it, because I cannot get? A definite decision? From anybody that you caught.
I know.
So based on that, it's easier if we solve it internally? And it will allow you all to do whatever.
So the question would be, shall we allow county employees? To make motions and seconds on?
On stuff that? On things to do with spending county funds? I guess is the way it should be stated.
Well.
Also, you know, myself? Where I have a spouse, Mr. Bayles, that has a spouse named Ronnie. Michael's in the same boat. Mr. Seales is in the same boat. Uh, Ron Jean Coleman, Mr. Coleman's the same boat. We need to clear this up.
I I'd like to just make a motion if I could. I'd like to move that that we have the language? In there that says? Unless you are enriched, meaning you actually receive funds as a result.
I would, I would like to? Ask you to be very clear. Not use the word enriched, but actually, actual, if you get money or if you have monetary benefit or?
If you, how about this, you, your spouse? Or anyone in your immediate family would receive? Actual remuneration funds? From the action, then you can't make the motion second or? Vote on it without that statement that we have to make.
Who's making the motion? Michael, okay. State your motion one more time, please.
That county employees or? Uh, spouses of county employees? Cannot make motions, seconds or vote? In instances where they will actually receive or their spouses receive compensation? Actual money. Not that their spouse would get a new office? Potentially. Or they might? Have a new automobile to drive. I'm talking about actual money. If you're going to actually receive money or your spouse is going to receive money? You can't second it, make the motion or? Vote on it without having made that statement that has to be made that? We haven't been making.
Conflict interest.
That, that does, that would not include? And I'd like to.
I see it flashing line.
But it would not include? Total budgetary thing, because that's state law.
That's state law.
We're going to put the motion out and see if we get a second. County employees or spouses cannot make motions or seconds? In cases where themselves or anyone in their immediate family will earn actual remuneration without making ethic disclosure, excluding the total budget.
Sounds good.
That's motion. So we got in there's a motion from Mr. Fagan.
Are you saying if they disclose it, they can do it?
Yes.
Even if they receive money? Because that's the way the motion is.
If we don't get a second, it's not. We have a second.
I didn't know I was going to have to make this up on the fly.
Did you say? Mr. Reed, the second, okay, so discussion. Or amendment.
Make sure you get your right.
Yeah, let's.
You don't want to go over risk.
No.
Well, I think it should read? County employees, spouses cannot make motions, seconds in case where anyone in their immediate family will actually earn remuneration, the money? And then strike without making disclosure. Those three words, those four words. I think then that.
That's fine.
Because if you're making the disclosure and you're still getting money.
You're okay with removing that from the motion?
I'm okay with removing that.
Mr. Reed, do you concur as the second?
Okay. I'll ensure. What I thought it was is? You cannot make a motion or second it if your spouse? Received money? And you couldn't vote on it. That's not what that said, but?
No, that's not what that said. No.
So you okay with removing the language that we're removing?
If we take that out, then it basically says if you're going to receive money, your spouse is going to receive money, you can't do it.
You got to, you got to say.
You got to say.
Except for the total budget.
Except for the total budget.
And and Mr. Solomon?
He's agreed.
Mr. Solomon and, uh, Mr. Dockery do a wonderful job with the fire department. Y'all was abstaining with that.
Right.
Stay away from conflict and the?
It's a good thing a county employee didn't second this motion, eh? Who's that? Who's back up? It's about summer time. So we have a motion second. Um, Mr. Kestner, you had a
Yeah, I'm, I'm somewhat confused about the way all this is going. Would it not be so much cleaner for you just to abstain from a vote where there would be a conflict by your potential employer? I mean, um, because there's, there's, there's pressure that can be put on you by an employer to vote a certain way. If my employer was requesting something here, I definitely would abstain from it just to not have, um, have it look like I'm supporting something just because they want it or whether it would benefit me or not. I just think the cleanest thing to do is just abstain and, and, and remove all doubt that there's any wrongdoing.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to that.
Go ahead.
That's, I'm not wanting to create a situation where, uh, folks will be voting on things where it would be your employer's coming here asking for something, I'd brought pressure to bear on you to vote. What I'm specifically talking about, this motion was to do capital planning. It wasn't to vote on renovating the offices here. It was just to do capital planning. That seemed far removed from somebody putting pressure on you to do or not to do capital planning. So it, it was just, it seemed to me that that was taking the representation for, what district you represent? Fifth district?
Yes.
Fifth district, and diminishing it, because he couldn't represent his constituency because he happens to work here, and they knew he worked here when they voted for him. And all he was making a second for was to engage in planning. That seemed a bit far removed from anything that somebody might bring pressure to him about, upon him about.
Mr. Hufaker?
Well, I think we have an ethics policy, and my personal opinion is, it applies to all the county employees, and we should apply that to ourselves. So I think we should go by the ethics policy.
Mr. Dockery?
Real quick, I think maybe the difference between Commissioner Kestner and us choosing to abstain and having a rule is the difference between choosing to abstain and abstaining with cause. Because when Commissioner Solomon and I, when we abstain with cause, that takes us off of the head count of twenty-one commissioners. Therefore, we all need a majority of nineteen commissioners to pass something, not a majority of twenty-one. If we abstain without cause, you still have to have eleven out of twenty-one usually to pass something. So us abstaining is essentially a no when it takes a yes vote to do something.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, may go ahead and proceed to vote.
I voted already.
I, I have no control out there.
I'll try it again.
Uh, it passes twelve-five. Third step. Now, Mr. Fagan, you had a motion that's on the agenda.
So as I sat here this evening, I, I noted that there were a lot of occasions where there were folks talking about what if, and what if this happens, or what if that happens. We got other county needs we need to take into consideration. And I think that we've not taken the time to do the planning on the county side that we need to do in order to be prepared to address these needs when they come before us. Before, I was asking that we do capital planning on the county side. But really, before we engage in capital planning, best practices would dictate that you engage in strategic planning for the county. And we've not done that. Uh, we don't have that planning mechanism and framework in place. And I think that hindered us in what we're trying to accomplish even for the schools. So I would like to make a motion, not asking to spend any money, just asking for the mayor and the finance director to request proposals to engage an entity who assists bodies such as ourselves to move forward into, in strategic planning in preparation for doing capital planning. Because if you don't have that guiding mechanism, then you might end up somewhere that you really didn't intend to go. There was, uh, quote, quotes from the Bible the last time we were here about not having vision and perishing. The great American philosopher Yogi Berra says, if you don't know where you're going, you'll probably end up somewhere else. So I'd like to see us have that, uh, go through that exercise, to have that in place so that we can say to our constituents, we've thought about, what are we gonna do for landfill when the landfill runs out? Do we need to replace our asphalt plant? If so, when? How much is it gonna cost? Strategic planning with regard to the vision we have as leaders for this county is conveyed to us by the constituents we represent. So you got my motion?
Could I summarize your motion to say, a motion for the mayor and finance director to receive quotes for strategic plan, looking to capital planning?
To seek requests for proposal.
Request.
Request for proposals for strategic planning. I'm not even pursuing capital planning at this point.
Request for proposal for strategic plan. Sir, a second.
Well, you can help yourself. Is this the way you raise that during the rally?
You know, Paul says everything is legal or lawful, fish.
Mr. Douglas?
I lost my train of thought, so. But, but, um, is that not what we have facilities committee for? I mean, do they not prioritize our needs? I'm, I'm, you know, if anybody's got an answer, give, give, you know, give me one.
Mr. Dockery, he's got a one beside his name. He's on Seals.
That was why I pressed the request.
Are you withdrawing your request?
No. Well, I mean, I don't know. I don't know how to move this around, but I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I thought that was the facilities, the job of the facilities committee was to, you know, give us direction on what we needed. And then it was up, up, best voted up or down?
Katie Huffaker has a number one, and she is chair of the facilities committee, so.
Okay, well, I think, I think what he's asking for was done several years ago through the Build a Better Future document, where they did a strategic plan. It, I don't remember the plan exactly, but it looks at healthcare, infrastructure, schools, parks and recs, business development, um, county services. It was a big drawn-out, well-planned document. They did several, um, I think, community surveys. They had, um, meetings in the communities. The businesses were involved, chamber of commerce was involved, schools were involved, our mayor was involved. And so I know a few years ago, they were trying to, uh, update that. So I don't know where that went. But I think that's, one of the things you're looking at is an overview of the entire county and what we need, and that's in that. If that's not what you're looking at, the facilities committee has been working closely lately with the mayor, um, Deb Longmire. We're trying to come up with, well, at our last meeting, we have our ADA projects that we had company come in, evaluate, so we know what all those are. Now we're, um, trying to get estimates because we need plans, so we're trying to figure out what the plans would cost. So if we need to come back for budget, um, the mayor's asked the county clerk and the elections commission offices to he's requested them to provide a projected growth for square footage for the next twenty years so we can figure out what we wanna do. We just opened up a satellite office in, um, Jefferson City at Walmart for county clerks. We've been told it's been being real successful, so that's helping with part of that. You know, we're, we're continuing to evaluate our buildings based on our needs, and it's like working a puzzle. So one piece, okay, we moved part of the people out of the county clerk's office, so, okay, so what does that do over here? And then we're evaluating the finance building. Uh, do we keep it? Do we sell it? If we do, where can we put that? You know, so it's like a puzzle. We're trying to work the pieces. If you're talking about strategic action plan for the whole county, I think if you look at that Build a Better Future document, that would be helpful. And then if we need to ask the chamber of commerce to revisit it and let us know the update, um, that's one thing. But if you're asking about the buildings, I think it would be more appropriate to ask the facilities director, the mayor, to continue to work with the facilities committee.
Let me back up. Mr. Dockery, did you, you still want to speak? Go right ahead.
And it's more of just a, a comment, question, or suggestion for Mr. Fagan. I'm not gonna try to craft a, an amendment to your motion, which I'll support whether you will or don't accept this suggestion, but what I think, what you think of strategic planning for the county, let me say, is capital expenditures and operating expenses are one side of the balance sheet, and revenue is on the other side of the sheet. So me personally, if we pursue this, I wouldn't mind seeing the scope of the project to be broad and to include potential opportunity for revenue growth in the future for Jefferson County to support the capital expenditures and operating costs on the other side, just as a suggestion.
Actually, that would be in the definition for strategic planning from my perspective. And anything that, uh, that I would suggest here would be, I'm not talking specifically just to capital planning, and that's, because I agree, if we were gonna do just capital planning, that would be something we would do through the facilities committee. I'm talking about the broader, broader scope of things, much like was done with Build a Better Future. But that is thirteen-year-old, fourteen-year-old information, and that did not have its genesis in this body. I think for this process to have its greatest chance of success, it needs to start right here.
And there isn't a doubt.
That's correct. So it, it would be that broad scope of things that Ms. Huffaker mentioned, and it would include looking at the revenue side.
Mr. Douglas, you, you have another question?
I'll just say the question.
Well, it's broader than
I mean the motion to do that.
I'm making a motion we can send this to the facilities committee.
That would be amendment to the motion that's on the floor to move to facilities.
It's a high-pitched motion. It refers.
So we have a motion from, uh, Mr. Douglas to move this to the facilities committee, sir.
I'll second.
And Mr. Scarlett's second. It's a discussion. We're faster than Frank in time. Frank's tired. Pick any version for him.
Take it.
Uh, Mr. Scarlett's second. Martin's second.
Passes eleven-eight, so this is, uh, forwarded to the facilities committee. Uh, we have come to the conclusion of our agenda. Let me make a few announcements. The courthouse and government office will be closed for general election, August the sixth, Labor Day, and also Columbus Day on October the twelfth. The public kickoff event for the ten-year recreational plan is August the seventeenth here at the courthouse. Your next work session scheduled is October thirteenth at six-thirty. Your next quarterly voting meeting will be October the nineteenth at six-thirty. We previously had that at October the twenty-sixth. We're going back to the original time. Thank you so much for your patience. Next time you meet, we should have your iPads for you, and that'll be another challenge that we'll get to face. We are adjourned.